Okay, we're gonna start. So it is eight thirty-one and we are about to start our special study session on Proposition 28 funding. This is the first of a board study session. We're planning more of these in the future. It's quite exciting. So eight thirty-one, we are calling to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yeah, you're all mixed. Trusty Inklis.
Here.
Trusty Khan.
Here.
Vice President Mahoney. President Hopwood.
Yeah.
Superintendent Stone.
Here.
Student Board members, Shepherd and Student Board Member Deodore. Thank you.
Great. So next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Yeah.
And all in favor?
Aye.
So the agenda passes. And now we are going to move on to item C, review and discussion, handing over to Superintendent Stone for the Proposition 28 funding presentation.
All right. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to thank our site leaders for being here tonight. It's, I know it's a very late night and to ask you to come to a special session after your very long days, just deep appreciation to you. Also want to let everyone know that Superintendent Paul is, Paul is on the way, pool is on the way. But really, this is not supposed to be a formal presentation, but I am going to go through this presentation first, just to kind of get everybody on the same page. And then after this presentation, there will be an opportunity for public comment, if there is any, just so the public is aware. It's a little bit of a strange setup because we're sitting here having a conversation and you're, we're like a fishbowl, but we do want to make sure that there is some, some time and space after the presentation.
Recording in progress.
So, um, yeah, thank you. So I think, just to get everybody on the same page of what is Prop 28. It was approved by the voters November eighth, twenty twenty-two. It's known as the Arts and Music in Schools Funding Guarantee, or AMS. We're not calling it that because we have an AMS in our district, so we're going to call it Prop 28. It was created on, an ongoing state program, to be an ongoing state program to support arts education in K-12 schools. I will just stop here for a minute and say that, again, somebody who's been in multiple districts across the area, this was sorely needed in many, many, many districts because there was no arts happening, or if it was happening, it was only because of parent fundraising. And so Prop 28 really did support districts across California to become more equitable in terms of ensuring that students were receiving arts programming. One of the reasons why I was so excited to come to Albany is that Albany is so invested in the arts and Prop 28 only enhances that and makes it better. So the implementation of Prop 28 was supposed to happen in twenty-three, twenty-four, and we'll talk a little bit more about that and what kind of happened in that year and why maybe some things got a little cattywankus in connection to that. But basically what it does is it allocates one percent of the K-12 portion of Prop 98 funding guarantee to the arts. And the goal is to provide new dedicated funding for arts and music education. So it's supposed to go above and beyond what districts are already doing. You hear this term, it's supposed to supplement, not supplant, so that's what Prop 28 is. And all local education agencies, all public schools in California are eligible for Prop 28. So I just said a lot of this already, but just again, some kind of highlights. The, the use of funds, a minimum of it, of eighty percent of it is supposed to go to certificated and classified staff, and up to twenty percent can go for training supplies or partnerships, and only a max of one percent for administrative costs. The allocation, seventy percent based on overall enrollment, thirty percent based on enrollment of economically disadvantaged pupils. And this part is a little bit confusing because it says it includes state preschool, and we do have a preschool. However, we are actually not receiving Prop 28 funds for our preschool. And so this is a confusing, a confusing part. That is not to say that we don't want to also ensure that our preschool students are receiving arts education. Accountability and reporting, I'm not, I'm clearly not going through every line here, but annual board report, a board-approved public report is required. So in May, I believe, or is it June, did we say we're doing the board, the official board report for Prop 28? May, June? June, okay. And of course, an audit is required to certify proper use. So what did we do to get ready for use, for, for Prop 28? Back before I was here, in twenty-two, twenty-three, I believe, there was an anonymous survey conducted for, with, for staff, to receive staff input. And then there was a board presentation, I believe, on six eleven twenty-four, to talk about how Prop 28 was going to be used. And then master schedules were planned in an effort to increase, again, supplement, not supplant, the arts education programming. We learned some lessons. One thing that I think we need to do better, and this is not just around Prop 28, but this is around all budgeting conversations, is to ensure that we're gathering community input in multiple ways. While ultimately, the way the law is written is that ultimately, school site leaders get to make decisions about how to use Prop 28 to better their school environments, we know that best practice is to get feedback, not just from staff, but also from community, other community members, and very importantly, from students, as we heard tonight, how important it is and how incredible our students are, and they, they can tell us exactly what we should do, and we should listen to them. So we need to make sure that we're getting community input in that way. Again, just going back, we're probably going to say this a million times today, but Prop 28 funds are meant to supplement, not supplant, arts programming. Some of the way this got rolled out, unfortunately, ended up inadvertently doing a little bit of the supplanting, but we need to, we fixed it, and so the idea, but again, we need to supplement, it needs to be more. And we need to be able to provide some regular progress monitoring of the use, not only the use of our funds, but how is it impacting our students and what is the overall improvement around arts education? What is that leading to? Students earlier in the prior board meeting tonight talked a lot about career readiness, having access to other types of rigorous classroom experiences, and I think, you know, the arts, the arts piece, especially when we think about advanced placement, or honors, or moving towards college and career, there's, there's some really interesting things we could be doing in connection to the humanities, but specifically around arts. And then we really need, oop, sorry, no, I'm not doing that, that, that's my computer. Okay. We really need to master the operational aspects of Prop 28 funding. So it was new, and people had to wrap their heads around it, and districts did that, and now I think we're, we, we understand better how to operationalize the use of it. And this, again, goes to the larger perspective of how we're doing budgeting this year, making sure that there is more community input, that it's very transparent, that it's very clear. And I say this a lot, we may not all like how it ends up, but at least we've all had an opportunity to say what we think it should be, and that's, that's what we need to do. All right. So next slide for what we ended up doing. So this was hard for me to uncover and unpack, because if you go back, you don't have to go back on the slide, but remember that this, we were supposed to get funding in twenty-three, twenty-four. Well, I wasn't here then, but I can tell you, in the district that I was in, we didn't get the funding in twenty-three, twenty-four. It didn't come. And that was confusing, going back to just the operational aspect is, you know, you usually don't spend money you don't have. And so I think districts were kind of like, well, what are we going to do if we didn't get the, we didn't get the, we didn't get the check, we didn't get, so what, but we had this idea of what we wanted to do, but we didn't get the money. So I understand that in this district, there was some confusion around that, and what ended up happening, I think, from, I think, because people wanted to see the arts improve, and because there were these ideas about how to do this, and thinking the money is going to come, and didn't come, we ended up using other budget dollars to supplement the arts, which inadvertently made it so that when the Prop 28 money actually came, we could, couldn't do what we did again, because we already did it. And so if we had said, oh, now we're going to use Prop 28 for that exact thing that we just did, that would have been supplanting, and so that would have been wrong. And we kind of did do that, and that's where we messed up. And I'm saying this in very layman's terms, but this is what I understand happened, and which is why I think there's been some confusion about why we weren't able to increase or improve the arts in some, in some cases. I will also just say, I think that some of this, that, that particular conversation, I think, really impacted the middle school for the most part. I think the elementaries and the high schools did get above and beyond, but twenty-three, twenty-four was not when that happened. That's my understanding, and I'm looking around and seeing nod, nods. Chris, I'm looking at you, too. Do you have any, that seem fair and accurate?
Yes, I think the middle, sorry. I think the middle school was also, it was exacerbated because the middle school grew.
So over the summer, what they had staffed on, based on what they had assumed, for middle school students, ended up being like, what, eighty to a hundred more? And so when we looked at the overall staffing, and what it should be, based on actual number of students, we realized that our base staffing should have been higher, which created this challenge with also supplanting versus supplementing. And so we did make modification, we, there were three sections in Prop 28 for the middle school that was planned in the budget, the adopted budget. We pulled two of those sections out. I'm very grateful to the teachers that came and met with us, because they kind of helped raise the issue for me, and I was able to go through, look at the staffing and enrollment, and validate that what they were saying was in fact accurate. And so in order to avoid that, we pulled two of those three sections out, and that, that's part of what added to the confusion and the challenge, I think, with Albany. So it was a mix of that. All of the other schools, the elementary, were easier, because we knew we added particular teachers using Prop 28. The high school, we added sections as well, and that all seemed to pan out pretty well. We could validate that we were supplementing. I would just add that the challenge with Prop 28 is that there is like, what, four spreadsheets of calculations that the state is requiring that Linda's going to do. That, that really, they look at the supplanting rule based on the dollars spent, so there's calculations that we have to go through as a district and show, here's how much money we spent in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five, and did we in fact show that dollar for dollar, we spent more money? Those are complicated calculations when you think about, how do we quantify music sections, sections versus art? We don't necessarily calculate it that way. So we're going to be doing, luckily for me, when I closed, we hadn't spent any Prop 28 last year, so I didn't have to worry about it. This year, we are, and so therefore, Linda's going to be doing those calculations, so, but it is complicated, and I've never seen, in all my years doing this, a state program come in and say, you have to prove you're supplementing by actually doing calculations that prove it from a dollar perspective. Usually, you're showing the FTE, or you're showing something, but this is actually a very complex calculation that she's going to have to do.
Chris, apologies if this is a stupid question, or way too in the weeds, is the way to think about this is, it's incremental spend per student on arts, because if eighty to a hundred extra kids came into AMS, obviously, our cost for the arts obviously went up, but I'm assuming then, was there some ADA requirement, or something along those lines?
That's literally, and that's what's challenging, it's a dollar amount. They want to see that you're spending more money this year on art, music, performing arts, computer education as a piece of that. They want, they want us to prove mathematically that we're spending more money, and that's part of the challenge, is that they don't take into a district that's growing or declining. Growing is not a problem, right? If you're growing, you're adding sections. We're in a good, we're in a good spot. But think about if you're declining, and you're actually reducing sections, because you're declining in enrollment, now you've got a little bit more of a challenge. We've had long conversations at the master scheduling level, trying to make sure that principals understand, like, if you had this many sections of all-inclusive art, music, drama, some computer education, you can't reduce that next year.
And is it incremental spend at the site level, or the district level?
District. It's at a district.
The district level, come. Thank you. Sorry to get in the weeds there.
No, and the twenty percent rule that Ms. Stone also referenced is at a district level, so it's not drilling down school by school, oh, if Cornell only spent this amount in staffing, that they're limited to only twenty percent of that, it's twenty percent overall at the district-wide level.
Does anyone have any more clarifying questions for this part? Because it is a little complicated and confusing, so, or any other things to add that maybe I didn't mention around what happened?
The staff survey went out like a week before, maybe? It wasn't the year before.
Okay.
And staff only had, like, I don't know that it even got a huge response from staff, because it was, it's very easy.
Yeah. Okay. Good, thank you for that clarifying. So yeah, so, could have done better. I think that's, I think that's the lesson. I think ultimately, what ended up happening is there was an art teacher at Casta, at Castania, that's my old district, sorry, Cornell, it's late, I'm tired. Marin, two part-time art teachers, Ocean View, an art teacher, again, these are not full FTEs, but there was addition of, of visual arts, and then obviously, some supplies, sixth grade section of computers, and some supplies there, and then addition of dance and band at high school. That seem accurate, principals? Okay. All right. So next, so just going over the, how the budget was spent, I'm actually going to pass it back over to Chris and Linda to go through the next few slides, just to talk about that complicated dollar amount piece.
Well, I think to your point, Prop 28 was passed by the voters, it always takes the state a few months, if we're lucky, lots of months if we're unlucky in this particular case, for them to kind of go through all the mechanisms to figure out what's the allocation per pupil, right? And so we didn't get our allocations till late in twenty-three, twenty-four, that was part of the challenge. But that's what that beginning fund balance of seven one twenty-four is. That's the money that we were, we received, or accrued for twenty-three, twenty-four, but we didn't spend it. So we have to account for it separately, we've got it in this own account, that the state tells us we have to use, that's the four hundred and seventy-two, nine fifty-four. Then in twenty-four, twenty-five, this is actually outdated, I just downloaded the new amount, this year, we're going to get four seventy-three, so it's actually three thousand higher. So we're going to get four seventy-three, seven seventy-three for this year, we'll take it. And then you look at the total of the two years, basically twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five, and we would have been allocated just under nine hundred fifty thousand dollars. What we're projecting in our expenditures this year, after we back two of the sections out for the middle school, is about three hundred and fifty thousand, which leaves just under six hundred thousand for us to then contemplate as we plan for both next year and the future. The challenge becomes, that becomes one time. So we, our ongoing money is about four, call it four hundred and seventy-five thousand. We're hoping it'll go up by COLA next year, we don't know for sure, but that's what we're hoping. So if we're going to get four hundred and seventy-five ongoing, then we have this five hundred and ninety-two thousand of carryover that we need to spend at some point, there's luckily no, like, you have to spend it all by this date, so you could spread it over two or three years, but basically, once you spend it, it's gone, and we're back to the four hundred and seventy-five thousand a year. So if we, if we develop programs around five hundred and fifty thousand, right, to spend it down over three years or four years, then at some point, we're paring it back. And so that's kind of the thing to keep in mind.
And if we are pairing, if we make a decision about how we want to do this, that's increasing, you know, proportionally, we're going to have to also make a plan, once we get back to the four seventy-five, what we're going to either continue to do, but then there's going to have to be things that we stop doing, so that we can keep that going. So it's always, the analogy, it's not even an analogy, I always say this, we have a dollar to spend, how are we going to spend our dollar? We don't have a dollar twenty-five with a dollar. Going to carve up that dollar however we're going to carve it up, that dollar has to go towards our priorities, so then we have to be able to prioritize. So it looks really exciting in a weird way, that we didn't have the money when we were supposed to have it, so now we have this excess that we're going to, you know, over a few years that we can spend, but we have to be really thoughtful about that, because that money will go away. And because you have to use Prop 28, eighty percent on staff, that's where this is really challenging, and I just want to, I want to highlight that, because this happened during COVID, right? There was one-time dollars that districts ended up using for staff, well, what happened to all that staff this year? They got laid off. So we have to be thoughtful about this. We can't just say, oh, we have close to six hundred thousand dollars, yay, we have six hundred thousand dollars for, that we're spending in two years, and then it's gone. But it has, most of it has to go to staff. So we have to keep that in mind. It's challenging.
And I also think part of the challenge was because of that maximum fifty, eighty percent minimum, I mean, maximum twenty percent, minimum eighty, we had, in the PowerPoint presentation that was done last June, there was all these dollars, so when I got here, I bound, I took that PowerPoint presentation, I balanced the budget to that. I'm like, okay, the elementary gets this amount in materials and supplies, and the elementary and, or the middle school gets this amount. elementary and, or the middle school gets this amount. But then when I analyzed the staffing, what we had estimated the staffing to cost, because Marina did a great job staffing and bringing people in at lower rates, we actually had the savings. Aside from backing the two sections out, the teachers came in costing less than what the estimated cost was, which then reduced down how much stuff we could buy. So we were actually walking a really fine line of being careful about how much stuff because we were constantly analyzing, okay, we can only spend 20%. And if our salary and benefits went from here to here, then our 20% went from here to here. And that was part of the challenge. And that's part of why we have so much carryover, is because our staffing came in less. That PowerPoint presentation also included 1.2 FTE for classified, but we only hired hourly instructional assistants to help with orchestra, or band, or music, or choir. And so that also was a much less, less significant cost because, you know, we're not actually hiring permanent staff. It's not a bad way to go. So I think it's actually a, probably a really powerful way to go, especially given the one-time nature of some of this money. But you can see how we estimated it, the cost of the program, but this, and it really came in at this.
So it's, it's tricky. Yeah, if you go to the next slide. So again, just, go ahead.
Sorry, just a quick clarifying question. I don't, I probably misheard, but I just want to confirm. I thought Chris said we don't have a time limit on when the almost six K, or what's the?
We'll, we'll look and see, because at this point, like, ELOP, the Extended Learning Opportunity, we can only carry over one year at a time.
Okay.
So like, as of this June coming up, we have to make sure all our '23, '24 money is spent by June.
Okay.
Prop 28 doesn't necessarily have that level. It may have some, at some point, they could come in and say, hey, you have to spend it all within three years. So I don't want to say that permanently there's nothing, but right now, we're, we're okay. Is it three years?
I think it was three years.
So there is a three-year limit?
Albie told me it was three years.
That's very exciting.
And the good news is, when we, when we account for stuff, it's first in, first out. So like, this year, we're actually spending '23, '24 money. So we, that's always how we account for it, yes.
I have a question. You stated that year-over-year, you're supposed to increase, but if we have a carryover that we increase, how do we have a decrease?
What we have to show is that we're increasing over our base. So in other words, the amount of money we're spending in our unrestricted money, we have to show we're spending more than that. And they look actually back at '22, '23 as the base year. And then the 28, Prop 28 money is the supplementing, not supplanting. So they're comparing it to how much we spent using unrestricted dollars. And by unrestricted, it includes our parcel tax and any other funding sources that we use.
And will that, I'm sorry, will that base always be used as?
The starting point.
As the starting point, or does it change in years?
It's supposed to be used as your starting point.
But it's going to compare it back, and so like, if, if we spent this amount of money in '22, '23, and then we gave raises in '23, '24 on that same unrestricted, I think it's probably going to take that into account. So it's always comparing the prior year, other funding sources supporting music and art, other than Prop 28. So if we're using 10 different funding sources to support music and art, other than Prop 28, we have to look at all of those first, make sure we're spending more than that year over year, in simple terms.
All right. Any other questions about this?
Just to clarify, and I'm, sorry, because I was trying to find the information and not have to ask it, and I thought I saw it when I was reviewing the slides, but we just talked about the expiration for the surplus funds, and I got the impression that there was not.
It's like three years, is what they're saying.
So it's three years, but then we're also seeing something else.
Prop 28 is perpetuity. I understand. They definitely should drill this off, but they have three years to spend on it.
And so what's our deadline, sorry, for spending that money?
So if we received money in '23, '24, that was the first year, we have to spend that money within three years. So that would be like June 30th of '27.
And I would just caution us that yes, it is true that it's coming, but also only as good as Prop 98. So back to, I think, what our, our colleague from CTA said, where we might, it might be better, wiser for us to not fight each other, but like, fight outwards and say, give us money. Because if Prop 98 is somehow to go away, or any of these, you know, if any funding changes from that level, then these things go away with it. So it's really important that we just keep, keep considering that, you know. We, we know that things are shifting and changing. We are very fortunate, I think, to live in California where there is actually a lot of energy right now, specifically around the arts, but also around ensuring education is, is funded better. Not adequately yet, but better. So just expenditures by schools, this is just back to that slide, you know, just where the FTE was. This is elementary, and then, Kim, if you want to move to the next.
And actually, I'm looking online right now, I'm on the CD webpage. It says, what if the LEA does not expend the funds in the three-year expenditure period? So we will be filing final expenditure reports, and they will be taking, taking the money back if we haven't spent it.
Yeah. So we need to spend it. 80% of it has to go to staff, and then it's going to go away, which means we're going to either have to figure out how we continue to pay for that staff, or we don't have that staff anymore. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a really, it's a tricky, it's a puzzle. So this is Albany Middle, what, what was used. And then if you want to go to the next slide, because we kind of already talked about this, this is just more of the details. And this is Albany High. Don't we wish that's what our, wouldn't that, wouldn't that be beautiful if that was our studio? Wouldn't that be gorgeous? Oh my gosh. Love it. That would be lovely. But look at them, look at AHS at Carnegie Hall. That's, that's just beyond exciting. Okay. Moving forward. Okay. And then this is the, I'll let Chris say this.
And this is just, it's just another way to look at it. It's showing it by school, how much we're spending at the elementary schools, the middle school, the high school, the district-wide indirect, which actually is, is too high because it was based on the higher budget. So when I actually looked at this, it's about $3,500. The rest of it, again, will get lumped into carryover. And so, again, you can see kind of how we're spending it by school level.
All right. Next slide. Okay, so back to how we can do better this year in terms of getting feedback. The budget process this year is in its, this is a new process this year, that we're doing budgeting different than we've done it before. Chris, Chris kind of started this before I got here. When I got here, Chris and I talked about this budgeting process and how we want it to be very transparent. We want to make sure that there's engagement, there's conversation, and that everything is really transparent and open. And so unfortunately, because I started in December, and I've said this many times, I'll say it again, this all should have started in November. It would have been nice to start this budgeting process in November, because the process that we're going through this year is way more robust than any process, I think, anytime, at least since COVID. I don't know what was like before COVID. So the, the idea is that through more community engagement at the site level, there's more conversation about how funds should be used, and those conversations should be had, not only with staff, but also with community members and students. I also did my listening campaign, and I definitely heard feedback around the arts. I met with music teachers, art teachers, I wish I'd met with more, but definitely heard ideas and thoughts. Students definitely gave, you heard a lot of what students had to say today, but I had deeper conversations with students as well, where they talked more about the arts. And, you know, for many of our students, coming to school every day, the one thing they look forward to is connected to the arts. That's why they come to school. And so they, they told me that, and they, they're very clear about that. So this process this year is, really didn't start until April. So remember what I said, November next year, we're going to start this process. We started in April. But what's great is that with Linda Wu, our, our amazing new chief business official coming in, and still having the support of Chris, we're able to, I think, well, we have a really dynamic team helping us move this forward. So all of our district leaders got one-page budget, I want to call them one-pagers. One-pagers. And what's on those one-pagers is the enrollment projection. Remember, enrollment is how we get our dollar. So the enrollment's going to tell us, are we getting a dollar, $1.25? Okay, they got their dollar. On their dollar, they have base FTE. Base FTE means their staffing to make sure that the program that they have to provide by law, by ed code, is going to happen for students. And also, by the way, per contract, per the ATA contract. They also got what we're calling supplementary FTE. Supplementary, now, when we say base and supplementary, we're not talking about the funding that's used. We're talking about, so you have 23 classrooms, you need 23 teachers. That would be base. Supplementary would be, and on top of that, we'd like to have intervention, and we'd like to have ELD, and we'd like to have whatever. In the base, we also included the prep, because that's part of the contract, and so we have to make sure that we're contractually giving teachers their 235 minutes of prep if, in elementary, if they're first through fifth, all the things. I'm not going to go into all of that. The, on these one-pagers, we also had space allocations, meaning how many classrooms and how many usable spaces are on the campus. That's really important, because as we're looking at our enrollment projections, we have to look at, do we have enough classroom spaces for the classrooms for our students? Now, in Albany, we actually have a good problem, but it's, it's a challenge. We're actually already, at this point, we already have all of our, so for TK, we had 120 spots for next year that we projected. We're already up to 118, meaning that we're going to probably exceed the, the projection. That's a good problem to have, but we also, in Albany, don't have any space. That's a bad problem. So all of these things have to be thought about when you're looking at your enrollment, your budget. On this one pager is also at the end of this, after staffing, and remember, staffing, FTE equals money, and it doesn't just equal salary, it also equals benefits. So once all of that is pulled out of the enrollment projection, of the average daily attendance dollar that schools will get, what's left over is discretionary budget. That's the, that's the, that's the fun part. That's the part where you get to go, okay, we want to do this really special thing at our school, how are we going to pay for it? And that's the conversation there, that the site leaders are going to be continuing to have. They've already had some of these conversations, I know, but they're going to continue to have these through school site council, through ILT, through staff meetings, through other mechanisms. As trustee Khan and vice president Mahoney mentioned last week, we had a DLEC slash SAC meeting where we talked about goals and priorities for the LCAP. We didn't talk about dollar amount next to it, but the priorities are how we spend our money. So if we say our priority is to increase arts, then we have to put our money towards that. And so that's where the school site plan becomes important. So what I always say is, you should be able to know exactly what a school or a district is doing by looking at their budget, not even needing to read the narrative of the LCAP or the SIPSA. You should be able to see where the priorities are by the budget. So those two things have to really be aligned, and that's the thing that we're working on this year, to make sure that anything that that budget has in it, has goals connected to it. So we're measuring those goals. We know that they're connected to something. And of course, those goals have to center our students, and most importantly, our most vulnerable and most historically marginalized students. So that's what we're doing, and that's basically what this, this little timeline is. So, site leaders got their one-pagers. We've had budget consultancies with executive team and site leaders. We've did three this week already. They were really fun, right? You all left so happy and excited, I know. They loved it, it was great. We're going to continue, we'll have the other two this week. We have, I think the other two are tomorrow, right? Oh, Thursday, not tomorrow, Thursday. Those are really important meetings, because what we're doing is we're looking at the one pager, and then we're looking, and we're talking about, well, this is what your one-pager is saying, but what do you think you're supposed to be doing at your school site, based on conversations you've had, based on how things have gone in the past? And that was a very important conversation. And then what happens from that is, school site leaders go back to their communities and say, okay, so this is where, this is where our enrollment is, this is what our money is, this is what we know we want to prioritize, but we only have a dollar, what are we going to do? We can spend this dollar this way, this way, or this way, how are we going to do it? Then they're going to come back for, after they've done some community engagement, they're going to come back for a final, what we're calling budget lock-in with executive team. And again, this is more of a conversation, it's, it's like an advisory. It's also a really important meeting for executive team. I say executive team, that means cabinet. I have different language, I apologize. But our executive cabinet, we, we need to hear what's happening at school sites, because A, it also informs what we're doing in terms of our planning for support, but also, we need to make sure that it's all aligning with the LCAP. So this is, these conversations are very, very essential. Prop 28 is a part of this. And so I want to be really clear, that part of the discretionary money that's sitting in the budgets is from Prop 28. They got their budget allocation for that. We had conversations already, and, and we'll talk a little bit about that, about how we can increase the arts using some of that Prop 28, and keeping in mind that we do have this close to $600,000 that we need to spend over the next two years. What are we going to do? And we think, we, we think there's some ways to do it. So those conversations have started. Site leaders are going to go back to their communities and talk about that, because again, this is supposed to be a community engagement. But I do want to go back to the, the actual law. The law actually says that site leaders get to make the decision, which is interesting, because that's not usually how the laws are written, so there's that part. When, after we do our budget lock-in sessions, I want to make, I want to say one little thing about this. The governor will do their, his May revise, is it May 13th?
14th.
May 14th. So the May revise is his final budget, this is what you can expect next year, per child. Our enrollment, of course, we don't know our final enrollment till somewhere in October, but we're, we're, we're moving in the same direction of what we think our enrollment's going to be. We're going to have the final budget lock-in sessions at the end of May, and then we're going to come right in that same week to the May board meeting and talk about budget assumptions for next year, based on the May revise and based on where we are with our enrollment. So again, that's very transparent, important. This is where we'll have another discussion about, okay, well, we thought we were going to get this, we're actually getting this, we have this many kids, this is where we are now. So those budget lock-in sessions are happening right around the same time. And then on, at the June 10th board meeting, we have our LCAP hearing and our budget hearing, and we'll do our SIPSA presentations. And then June 16th, which is our last board meeting of the year, well, hopefully, hopefully everything will go well, and we'll have our LCAP approval and budget approval and SIPSA approvals. So any questions about this timeline? And I'm sorry, not from the audience yet, but from this, this group here. Any questions? Any questions? Nope. Okay. All right. So, this is what we're working with for Prop 28 this year. So, Chris, I'm going to, or Linda, I'll hand it over to you guys again. You already kind of said this, but this is where we are.
So, the projected beginning balance is what Chris had shared earlier, was going to be the remaining balance from the current year, unused, to be used next year as one-time funds. And we got an extra $3,000, so, instead of $470, it's actually $473,000. So, in essence, you have like a million dollars to work with over the next couple of years. And we're still doing budget development.
Yeah, and we're actually working on the Prop 28 budget right now, based on some of the staffing that we've talked about. So, to kind of determine what, what of the hun, of the million, call it million seventy, because I'm going to round probably to four seventy-five. You know, what, if we do some augmentation, if you will, at the elementary level, what cost is that? What does that, what does that, how much of that $1,062 or $1,070 are we going to spend, knowing we have to spend a chunk of it? And we would include a, probably a Prop 28 in the budget assumptions that we bring at the end of May. We'll include a slide that basically outlines, based on the work that we've done and the staffing that's been determined, kind of what that looks like, really in more practical dollars than cents. So, I would anticipate we would have something specific on Prop 28 in those budget assumptions.
So, these are the, the current draft, very drafty plans that we have started to discuss, and these are things that we discussed when we actually met in our budget consultancies and in the conversations that we've had so far. So, one of the thoughts, and I'm actually going to add to this, where it says elementary, we have had a discussion about how we can expand music, so that each site has a dedicated music teacher or 1.0 music teacher. We've also talked about expanding art, visual arts at the elementary, so that fourth and fifth graders are getting art instruction as well. I want to put a pin in TK, ACCTK, I want to put a pin in that, because I also want to talk about thoughts that we all have, about how we can also ensure that our little people are getting that. But, where we really want, where we're talking about investing right now is expanding first through fifth in arts and music. And then, you'll see for middle school, investing a little bit more in computers and robotics and drama. And then, in Alameda High, continuing, I mean, I'm sorry, what am I saying? I am like, I'm in Alameda, I'm in Ravenswood, I'm going to go to Oakland soon, all my schools, all my districts. I don't do well after 7:30. Everyone should know that about me. Albany High School, I'm so sorry. In Albany High School, we're going to continue what we've done with the certified and classified positions in theater, dance, and visual arts. This is, this is, again, these are draft plans, and these are the things that principals are bringing back to their communities to have conversations about.
And Sarah, just to be clear, we also were looking at continuing with some of the classified support, in particular, for the high school.
Yeah.
I think to a lesser extent, the middle school and the elementary, I don't know about, but definitely, I would just wanted to touch on the classified support, even though it continues to be hourly.
Yeah, classified, we talked about mostly at middle and high school and not at elementary, but elementary is more certificated addition.
Exactly.
Making sure that those fourth and fifth graders get visual arts. Okay. So, what we need to do now, we need to ensure that we're compliant with Prop 28 spending requirements. That's like a low bar, right? We need to plan for staffing and program supports aligned with Prop 28 goals. And then, as I've mentioned, through our site budgeting, SIPSA process, and actually through our LCAP process too, we're engaging stakeholders in shaping arts education. And we're going to be monitoring or reporting on impact of Prop 28 funding on student access and outcomes. That's the challenge, because it's hard to say, because we don't really have baseline data. So, this is where we'll have to really think about, how are we monitoring the impact on student outcomes if we don't have baseline data? So, I, this is, this is, again, I love solving puzzles, my favorite thing. We'll figure something out. But I think it's going to be important that we monitor not only how we're spending the money, because that's what the state cares about. What I care about is, are kids getting what they need? And are they, how is this supporting them? One thought I have actually goes to college and career readiness and thinking about students, how many students in high school feel prepared and are excited to take more of the arts, move in that direction? We have, I mean, our kids in Albany are so crazy talented. People have heard me say this before, I sent my own child to Oakland School for the Arts. Should have sent him to Albany schools, because honestly, same and better, and, and not, not with all the hype, right? But just incredible, incredible talent in this district, and so, we want to, but we need to figure out how we're monitoring what this is doing, what's the impact for kids. And with that, we can now, I'm going to pass it over.
One last thing, Sarah, to add bullet, important bullet on that last slide, is, this also has to be included in the LCAP. So, there will have to be an LCAP thing around Prop 28, so that's part of the requirements as well.
Great. So, we're now going to move on and take public comment first. Typically, we do board kind of team comment and questions, but we're going to go public comment first. So, if you'd like to make a public comment, we can, yeah, there you go. You can say where you are, or you can, you can just shout out, up to you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kate Heisinga. I'm the choir teacher at the middle school and the high school. I'm really happy we're having this conversation about Prop 28 funds. It's very encouraging and exciting for us to teach the arts here at Albany. So, one thing that I, with it being like the first main year that it's been implemented, is it felt like there was a bit of a struggle to implement, like, implement these funds. We met with our department chairs, we said what we wanted, but there was no one to kind of ensure that it went through. And so, one idea I had was there being some sort of like visual and performing arts coordinator, who's like a point two or something like that, to make sure that they can coordinate with principals and heads of schools, to make sure things are actually happening. Because we have so many awesome ideas, so many things all of us need, but then it just kind of is like the school year is done. We have all this money left over, and we didn't get the support that we needed. We got some things, which we're really grateful for, but we didn't get everything that we needed. So, on top of that, I just want to make the school board aware of how many students we have going through particularly the music programs at the middle and the high school. Me and the high school band orchestra teacher are both over full-time. At just the middle school level alone, I teach three middle school classes. I have 200 students. It's a lot, it's a lot of students in one room where I am the only teacher. So, having a co-teacher is just, would be so, so helpful for me, and also for my band colleague at the middle school too. We just have these huge classes, and it's pretty difficult to maintain a high bar and high quality, like, level of music when we have that many students in our room. And if we got extra support of getting someone in the classroom and helping us out, it would just mean the world. And that also goes to the high school classes as well. Particularly, the middle school classes are really full and busy, but the high school ones too. The more co-teachers, et cetera, we could have, the better. And I speak also on behalf of the other secondary music teachers about the, how meaningful these aides have been. I believe you've kind of referred to them as classroom aides. We refer to them as music coaches, and that has served for like the middle and high school choir accompanist, or the orchestra strings coach, or the percussion coach at the middle or high school. And those, we've struggled with this year, because there's not a line item for their pay, like, to, I guess, be worth what they are giving us. So, instead, they're being given like an hourly rate that is less than what they would be making, and it's made it really hard to find these music coaches to come into our classrooms, because they're not making as much money as they would anywhere else, even if they're only coming in one day a week. So, we have all this extra money, and I'm like, dang, like, I, it would have, it would have been so great if instead, like, when we were asking for them to be paid, you know, this much money an hour, if that could have been thought of more so for us, and that would really help our program. And then, I'll just say one more thing. I wondered if we could get, be able to access exactly, like, line by line, like, how the Prop 28 funds were spent, and when that will be able, like, to be made clear to all of the staff. That would be really nice for us to know.
We'll work on that, and I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have? Go ahead, Patty.
I'm Patty. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Cornell, and I just wanted to say, I'm really grateful that we're having this conversation. I was so excited to see Prop 28 pass, and the funds are exciting, and it sounds like incredibly complicated. But I cannot tell you how jealous I am as an upper grade teacher, watching the amazing art projects that Ms. Silas is doing with the first through third grade teachers. We've always been really spoiled with our fantastic music teachers. The fourth graders get to experience choir, musical theater, and band, and I'm always so happy when those recorders go home. But, but just the, the amazingness of having a room where the students can go to and work on an art project, where that's the only thing you're working on, that you're not worried about, like, pouring your watercolor paper on top of your math book or whatever else is going on. The idea of treating it like it's the sciences is very exciting to me, and I'm just really pleased to see all of us here tonight, and I hope that we can move forward on some of our desires. I understand that we won't get everything we want, but thank you so much.
See for your comment.
Hi, thanks for this discussion. It's really great. I have a couple, one point of clarification maybe that you can do in a minute, which is on slide 13 in the Moving Forward, the Budget, you said continued positions to support theater, dance, and visual arts, and I wondered if music was left off of that inadvertently, because I know there is Prop 13 money that's going to music at the high school, but I want to make sure that's also planned to continue. And then, I just wanted to say, I, I agree, at some point, it would be great to see how the money was spent in some point in a, like, public setting. And finally, I, I just, I'm really moved by the amount of investment that the teachers have in these art programs. And as a parent, you know, you're told your child needs to make connections with adults who are not in their family, and for so many kids, including both of mine, these connections that they have made with adults are these arts teachers at their schools. For my kids, it's music, but I know for some kids, it's also art. And my kids were too, too old to get, to take advantage of Amanda Silas's, but, I mean, I just think that we, we really need to hear what they're saying about, like, for example, Kate needing extra hands in this classroom full of kids, because they can get, there's so many connections that can be made. And I do think that, like, part of spending this extra money is paying some of these assistants a little bit more money, in order to have, like, a high-quality choir accompanist, for example, or a percussion coach, or whatever it is that these teachers are asking for. If we, if, you know, we have the extra money, we need to spend it. We certainly don't want to send it back, so we can put more money to the individuals that we're spending it on.
Thank you. Anybody else? Jeff, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jeffrey Luna Sparks, elementary music teacher. The students call me Jingle Jeff. I just want to say a big, super big thank you to our new superintendent, Sarah Stone, because she not, I felt like I was listened to, and I was heard when we met with her. And the music teachers came in, we came in with our ideas, and it was really cool. Sarah had her ideas, and she, through the meeting, she saw, she found ways that these ideas could connect and work together, and it was just so beautiful. I don't know what will happen, but to know that we were heard and we were listened to, that means a million dollars. So, thank you so much.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Amanda.
Hi, everyone. I'm Amanda Silas. I am the art teacher at Cornell, and I also am the art teacher at Marin, but shared with, I teach second and third grade art, and another person is teaching first grade art, just because it's a really full schedule. I teach 17 classes of first, second, and third graders. It's a lot. But I, I emailed with superintendent Stone a little bit, and I, I just wanted to come and kind of, and maybe this is not the place for it, but to sort of answer your questions about how it was rolled out, and, and, I don't know, I have a lot of thoughts on it, and, and mostly, the biggest thing is, like, I feel very appreciative that we have visual arts in our schools now. It's something that, I've worked in Albany schools since 2006, and I was hired as the visual and performing arts teacher. And then, we lost that funding, because it was a parcel tax, and my own children have gone through Albany schools, and it's something that I have felt like, oh, that we're lacking. We really need visual arts. It's awesome that we have music, and I love that we have music. So, I, I mean, my, my kids directly benefit from Kate Heisinga, who is a goddess, but I, anyway, so, I wanted to answer questions, or come back, or whatever, and give thoughts.
Appreciate all of the perspectives here. Does anybody else have a comment in our audience? Go ahead, Consell.
Thank you. My name is Consell Chorak, and I am a high school student at Albany High School. I'm, regarding the draft goals from earlier, I noticed that it referenced robotics in the seventh and eighth grade level, and I'm currently, along with Mr. Morris, the computer science teacher at Albany High School, leading a program at Marin Elementary for teaching robotics to first graders. And so, we're expanding it to go across all first grade level classes, and this, I think this month, actually, we're expanding it to Cornell, and we're hoping to expand it to Oceanview next year. And so, my question is, is there any thought about robotics and technology at the elementary level? And if so, I'd discuss that more, because we talked with the education funds and individual PTAs, but funding was a little bit of an issue at first.
That is a great question, and I don't know the answer, but we will look into that. But I did read, we had the recent, one of our board meetings, talking about the program that you have so wonderfully introduced with Sean Morris. So, we, yeah, we'll look into those funding issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, anyone else here in our audience? Okay, so, we can now extend comments, questions to board, to anyone else sitting here? Anybody who needs some further clarification or chatting?
What we heard, what we're hoping to do.
Hello, testing? I have two questions and some ideas. So, based on the comments from the audience, if, if we were to hire co-teachers for music, right, because I know that they are over, overburdened with the number of students, would that be supplanting? Like, is there a way to do it, like, giving Kate somebody else in the classroom, or giving Craig or any of the music teachers?
I, I think it would just come down to how that was quantified, like, the job description. If it was specifically, they're going to be assisting, teaching music, and we're coding and tracking it that way.
Okay.
I don't think it would be supplanting, because we would be adding something. But if it was, no, we're going to provide an instructional assistant or paraprofessional in the classroom to do other stuff, so that this teacher can do music, that, you know what I mean? So, you have to really be careful.
Okay.
How it's structured.
I'm saying that, because we do not want to lose those teachers, and we want to make their lives easier and support their programs. My second question is, is there a reason that we're not paying the hourlies more? I have no idea what they would make, but it does, where's Marina?
Sorry. I was answering to my kid.
Okay. Sorry.
I'm going to stand.
It's just so, it is very, I mean, it's very expensive here.
So, we have an established salary schedule for music assistants that top out in maybe an a little less than $40 an hour. And we have existing music assistants who support band at the elementary level. And it didn't seem fair to have two different salary schedules. It felt like it would be disrespectful to those music assistants at the elementary level. But it's certainly something that the board could, we could look into and we can see what a, whatever the going rate is. But for this year, it just didn't seem right to do that. It'd be insulting.
Thank you. Okay, now I have all kinds of ideas I'd like to share because I, I know from the music fund and just speaking to some of the teachers that it, it is very hard to spend the money. We talked about this a lot. Eighty percent, the 20%, not supplanting. So generally speaking, I'm wondering if we can try to focus on spending the money in the arts, but also helping some of our other objectives, like AP as an example. Like I know the students talked earlier about wanting more AP and they want it in humanities. What about bringing in some more APs for the ninth and 10th graders in arts, robotics, stuff we don't have today, but would be in addition. Mural projects is something that we did at the middle school with the PTA. It was this kind of a social emotional project, but the PTA's paid for it, but it's also art. So that could be something that we could use the money for. And expanding on that, and I don't have any good ideas with that, but wellness is obviously a huge part of what we focus on. And is there a way to bring art into some of our wellness programs and use the money that way, especially the money that might go away in a couple of years? And, okay, somebody may not like this one, but I know there's a dream to expand the little theater. And is there any way to use the money for? Architect, just a plan, just ideas? No? Okay, just an idea? Okay, okay. Okay. Well, I just meant for the planning part, right? There's that 20%. Obviously, we can't use the money for the building. That might be all my ideas. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Well, I just, I just want to say, it's like a little brain, something that I heard that the money that was not spent last year, last year, right? That happened in a lot of districts because everybody got the money in, like, like, so nobody spent the money from last year. Berkeley is using the money that they had from last year. They had to write a special proposal to Prop 28 people to update facilities. And they are using it at the King Middle School to update their theater. And I don't know more about it than that, but I do have a contact person. So if we wanted to talk to them. Okay. Sounds good.
There is a waiver process in the law and I'm assuming, because I've got enough right now. So I think that's probably.
I mean, I don't want to say for sure that happened. I heard from a person who said this is happening, but I think it might be.
There you go. Thanks for bringing up the waiver process data. So can I just say, first of all, I'm not worried about the money going, people keep talking about the money going away. Given the FIFO rules on this, like, I think that's a false, that's a red herring in this conversation. So just, I'd like to kind of throw it off the table. I'm not going to prescribe answers because that's not my, my role as a board member. I would give some thought to, so I'm a big believer in not spending large chunks of one-time money on things that eat. And that's, and so we shouldn't do that. I think we could have a five-year strategy on how we want to kind of spend this down. And I would love like maybe a top-down direction to say, look, if we, even if we have projected income, I'm making up numbers, 470, we say, let's go for 625 a year. That is on a five-year run rate, that's going to run, that'll run us from our current surplus down to roughly flat. And then we can reevaluate from there and use that sort of top-down guidance, then figure out at the site level then, how we want to go after whatever the particular priorities are. So, but I also want, I definitely want to take this money going away thing off, like most of that, like we have to spend 120K this year and next year, I think, to get rid of the 2023, 24 money, which I think will be gone anyway. So like, shouldn't get too worried about that. Those are my comments, at least for now.
I have a question about certificated individuals that are hired. Do they have to be student-facing, meaning they have to be teachers, or could they be coordinators?
So, so if there's a cap of 1% on any administrative costs, including indirect. So I believe that a coordinator, while I can completely understand the benefit of that and it would make a lot of sense, I don't believe that you could sell that with Prop 28. So.
Yeah, the teacher on special assignment, probably. The non-ordinary, I mean, administrative costs, but I think it is, I think the intention is that student-facing. And so it's, I always say, or Chris always says, well, pass the smell test. And that one is.
I mean, I think if you had a teacher on special assignment that was doing, as an example, I'm going to model art or music lessons in the classroom with students as a way to help train teachers. You know what I mean? Is that professional development or is it student? You know, so I think it's literally how you define it. And the auditors are going to be drilling down into, and so we don't even really know, like, what kind of questions are they going to ask? But I think you'd have to have at least a component of it that the teacher or classified staff member is really working with students, even if part of what they're doing is also improving instruction or improving knowledge for adults on some level. So I think there'd have to be at least a major component being forward-facing, student-facing.
I'm curious what our staff here is thinking of this conversation. I don't want, I can call people, but I see some rage, I see some, some movement in the head and like, that sort of thing. So I think people are seeing a lot of some, but I was curious, like, what your actions is. Because apparently, I didn't listen to the money.
Oh, we call on, I think, I mean, I'll just say, in my, yeah, in my, in my experience with the high school, I think we, we have a very good problem right now. In that Albany has had a very long tradition of maintaining high-quality arts programs. And I've spoken to many families that moved to Albany specifically to have access to those art programs in places, coming from places where they didn't have access. And so one of the challenges of the high school has been, when we say adding sections, what we're saying is more bodies doing more, more art. I mean, really, is kind of what it comes down to. And we, we already have a lot of trouble finding space for a lot of things to begin with. And so we were able to do things by, for example, having dance now count as a E-course that allowed us to expand our, our dance offering, some of those things. So for, for us, it's really been that question of how do we really get all of those people in there? And then we definitely ran into a problem at the beginning of the school year, which, which I'll take some ownership over to, which is a lot of our budgeting was around materials especially, was based on an assumption that we later understood was supplanting. And so that definitely changed some of our math as well. And so I, I think we're, I'm, I'll just, I'll speak for myself. I'm in a really good place with a lot of folks around my school, which is they are coming to me with ideas. They're like, wouldn't it be cool if we could do this? And I'm like, you know what? I think I can find a way to make that work. So I, I'm, I'm confident this has been a learning year and I think we're really going to, I'm, I don't want to give anything away and I gotta, I gotta ask people some questions where I can say anything. But I think there's a lot of things coming up that I'm, I'm excited about that will really allow a lot more students to have access to much better experiences at the high school.
So. Well, I will just say, like, the idea of thinking about having a dedicated music teacher at every school at the elementary level, I think, like, that's exciting for me to think about because just hearing from Patty earlier of, like, trying to build a schedule where certain grade levels get certain things while others don't, has been really challenging. And so I think having consistency across the grade levels will just ensure that we have, again, just a more consistent schedule for everybody. And this will allow for, again, more consistent academic programming. So.
No, it's, it's good. What would just go down the line? You know, I definitely made some mistakes in the beginning of the year around the whole art and drama piece and learned from that. But I do want to say that, you know, I want to support the teachers because a lot of our visual performing arts teachers have very full classes. And so, you know, and then Darren and I have been trying to work much more as a 612 continuum. And we'd share, you know, we, you know, Kate and Craig and Lucas work at both sites. So how can we support them as a 612 leadership team? And so that, there's that piece. And then also, you know, being able to give students more options of electives that they can choose from. I, I was excited about, this year was the first year, we offered a wheel for 120 of our sixth graders, you know, so that this year, all of our sixth graders had a first period. We made it a required class. And having that wheel allowed, allowed that to happen, considering we had 330-plus students. We were able to have each kid, 120 kids take a drama, computers, art, and journalism, and they produced really amazing pieces of work. So I'm ready to get going. As I was, I whispered to Linda, I can spend money. You have to sometimes control me on how I spend it. So I'm. No, I'm gonna. No, 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 but, but I am. It's okay. I'm okay with that. I'm going to actually pass it down.
Might as well keep it going. Thank you. Hi, hi, everybody. And yeah, thanks for asking, Josh. I am really excited about the possibility of expanding the arts. Not only, I mean, I know I don't have to speak to this crew about the benefit, but I just do want to say that, you know, what we see in the arts is, you know, problem solving. We see creative solutions. We see, you know, kids taking what's in their head and, you know, and trying to create it. And then what happens when it doesn't all work out, the way life just doesn't always work out, right? It's, it has implications across the curriculum and it has implications for us as humans. And I know I'm preaching to the choir about that, but I, I think expanding art makes a lot of sense for human beings. I think it also makes a lot of sense for our prep schedules. Similar to what Kat was saying, the fact that we share prep teachers, and this is music, this is art, you know, whoever we share, we love all our people and we love to see you at all our sites. And it has direct implications for facilities and shared spaces and schedules and what days we can do what on. And it makes it kind of tricky. So, yeah.
To just those implications is. But like also just thinking about the amount of different student contacts that our arts and music teachers have across the sites is astounding that they know our kids all the way in and out of their classrooms. I mean, watching, watching my first graders know how to run their whole art stations and, and where to go and how to do all the things and clean up and, and do it in a way that is just, that demonstrates agency, first graders, where art can be just everything and anything. And they do it with purpose. They do it with knowledge. They do it like just really confident in the work that they're doing and they're excited about it. And so the idea of expanding all of this all the way through is really exciting to me. So.
I don't, I don't really have much to add, honestly. I, I'm excited about it. It sounds really exciting. If we can add more, you know, art to elementary ed, I think that would be great. Sorry, it's late.
I'm just wondering if we are or are not getting money.
So, yeah, so, no, no, but, but I think I did say put a pin in ACC TK and K. So one of the things that we want to think about as we're continuing to move forward is, I love the idea that we're talking about our, what I'd like to see is a continuum. So our tiniest little people to our ones who are about to graduate and go off into the world are having a continuous experience with arts and music and robotics and, you know, all of, all of the kind of those, those levels of enrichment. We're going to have to be creative to think about how we do that, to expand it. And then going back to that little problem of we have this extra money now and then eventually it's going to go back down to a certain level. We want to be smart about our budgeting. That said, when we do our budgeting session with you, we'll have conversations about how we can ensure that our three and four-year-olds are getting something that, you know, helps them get excited. First of all, you do have incredibly creative teachers in your school who do a lot of arts. But part of what we maybe want to do is support them to think about how to do, or, or, you know, give them more professional development. And if we're not using Prop 28, we, we can do a lot of cool things. We don't have to worry about this 80/20. TK and K is, I think, a conversation we want to have over the next few years, though. So I think we're, we're thinking about how are we expanding in fourth and fifth right now with visual arts. I think we, we also want to think TKK and think about how we're supporting teachers in those classrooms to do some of the things we're talking about for preschool.
So for the money that, like the, sorry. Over $500,000 of the one-time money and like the 80% of that that needs to get spent on staff, we do paid interns. So we're not putting the salary, like permanent teacher's salary on like money that's going to end up going away to like add people in support, like how Ms. Hizinga said for like her different classes and like adding support to those classes.
I, I do wonder, that's a really, really interesting and cool idea. And I wonder about our resident artists having interns as a program. And I don't know if that's Prop 28 allowable or not, but that's a really interesting idea. So our resident artists, meaning our beautiful art teachers that are sitting in the room, having, if we can have some sort of a support program where they're getting interns, that could potentially be a creative solution to some of the things that were brought up today. And also maybe a way that we can use some of our Prop 28.
I think it would, I think it would come down to how were the interns paid? So interns can be directly hired by the district and paid as interns if there's some HR process to apply that. But interns also can be, can be paid through an agency. You're hiring an agency to pay interns.
We wouldn't be able to do that. They'd have to be directly paid.
We would not be able to do that because that would not be considered salary and benefits for staff. I think, yes and no. It just depends on, unfortunately, when you drill down, it really comes down to how are we, how are we doing it? So interns is not, not allowable, but it depends on how it's structured.
Yeah.
Yay.
Wait, can I, can I comment on that question quickly? And then there's just the one, we're talking about, like, if we're expanding, I keep hearing, expanding art at the elementary. If those adults are going to be alone with students, then they can't be intern-level. They have to be certificated credential teachers, as opposed to maybe what maybe you might be talking about, kind of to address like assistance and stuff like that. Yeah.
And the Prop 28 actually specifically comments on that. So Prop 28, when you go through the materials, specifically talks about having credential teachers in the classroom, supervising the classroom. You could have interns, however, helping out while the teachers.
Or stipended positions.
You're absolutely right. It actually comments on that.
Yes.
Supervisors of the classroom have to be credentialed. So you'd have, you could So you'd have, you could have an intern in the classroom working with you.
So for example, a first-grade teacher could be required to be in the classroom while an art teacher is providing art, who's not certificated. Correct?
Yes.
Or, as our choir director was mentioning, within the same classroom, with the choir director or band director, they need an intern to support them. And I would say to that, it's giving more as opposed to, but an intern is a very interesting idea.
And then for, like, keeping consistency within the programs and then creating more opportunities for students who just graduated, it could be students who just left the program coming back to intern, who already know the program, so it's not like the teachers that have to then explain the program.
This is where CTE comes in.
That was my exact thought when you mentioned it. My comment is more so on the monitor baseline data that we were talking about, I think, sorry. Why are you laughing? No, my thought was particularly, so what I was thinking about is, at the elementary level at least, there's only going to be one class really, like, the, the current fourth grade class that'll be going into fifth grade, that'll be for the first time experiencing this art level at the fourth, fifth grade level, versus the third graders that are moving up to fourth will have already had that experience. And I wonder, I'm not even going to lie, the presentations we had from the students earlier today are making me wonder if we can kind of have some sort of a survey. Now, it might be too late in this current school year, but maybe early at the start of the school year, you know, see if we can survey them about their thoughts on art. They've, you know, will have had one year of no art to now, then what does it look like? What does it feel like for you? But then also, actually, multiple years, right? Because I don't rem, the one to third art started this school year, so these, the upcoming fifth grade class will have been out of art for at least two years now, I want to say? Yeah, because I think the art was more so just what was already being done in the classroom with their, you know, homeroom teachers. So that, that was the one thought that I had, and I also want to explore the idea, however we do it, of art as a form of healing as well, and art therapy, because we're, oh, okay, then you guys are. Well, no, my thought was just kind of like, we've already struggled with mental health at K-12 levels, and I'm just kind of wondering how, you know, some of these things, it's not just about teaching art, but it's also a lot of other kind of, a lot of other skills, how to express yourself emotionally, all of that kind of stuff. And I, I'm wondering if that's an approach we can also take in this, especially as some of our mental health funding continues to be limited at the statewide level. I don't know. Also, Josh, if you need, if you need someone to come and do art, I used to do it for my kids' preschool, I've got a whole setup.
We, we actually, we started to talk about that in one of our budgeting sessions, and we were going to look into arts, mental health supports, and I'm not sure if that's allowable in Prop 28 or not, but we were going to look into that because it's, it's also a creative idea, and I think it's an interesting thought to, to explore, especially, yeah, in light of the conversation that we had today, what students were saying, and how, how much they appreciate having that, that support. I am noticing our time.
Sorry, can I just take one quick thing? I'm just hearing a lot of people saying, like, lots of different descriptions of different kinds of assistants who might come into the classroom, and I just would encourage you to definitely talk to the teachers about what kind of people they need. Because I do think, like, there's some things that are appropriate probably for an intern, there's other things that are for, like, the elementary school band assistants who are doing a lot of aid work, like, helping with the classroom management. And then something like a percussion teacher or a professional accompanist for, like, it's a very different skill level. And it, to me, as a musician myself, I just think it is appropriate to pay these people at different, at different levels. So I just don't want you to, like, sort of group everyone all together.
No, absolutely. Appreciate that comment, and also just appreciate the brainstorming, just to kind of throw it out.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Do we have any more comments? Just because we have a couple of minutes left, we want to finish. On time, please.
So, you know, in our schools, we've participated in enrichment for a lot of classes, like Lego enrichment and chess club, and I'm wondering if any of those fall into this category of art?
There's actually, on, if you go to the CD website and you Google Prop 28 or search it, if, there's dance, and it's, it has like five items, there's theater, music, visual arts, media arts. Those are kind of the categories that they talk about qualified for Prop 28. So if you have questions, you can go on that website to kind of take a look. I, I don't see Lego in here.
Oh, Lego robotics, yeah. So there, there is definitely.
Again, but it doesn't even say robotics, it says computer coding. Now, maybe that's robotics, but again, you kind of have to look at it and make sure you're designing around the language because that's what the auditor will be auditing. Like, for something like art therapy, you know, that truly is art, and it's providing art in the classroom that could be used, like, for therapy, but you're actually doing arts instruction that happens to also be therapeutic. It's all on how you define it.
Okay. Are there any final comments or questions? We are now at nine fifty-nine. So I think we are going to go ahead and adjourn, but I want to thank everyone so much for coming, for your engagement and your advocacy for all of our kids. And I really appreciate the conversation, and I think it's the first of many, hopefully. So thank you so much, and thanks for coming, we're journeying to another.